Kate Howe, who is our principal with our prime consultant, which is Viya Perkins Eastman. We will hear from her shortly. Shreya Malu is also on the line. She's our project manager with Viya Perkins Eastman. And I think, oh, and Navisha Pentakoda, she's our redesign planner. Oh, we have two more with the city of Edmonds. And finally, last but not least, Dan Kennedy is our, dare I say, our growth management expert in helping us with kind of the unit counts and numbers and that kind of thing. So we may hear from him later. But I just wanted to thank everyone, not only the planning board, but also the members of the public for, for, you know, participating in the past, showing up and, and hopefully carrying on this conversation as we really start to get into the, as, as what some public comments have said, get into the, the fun stuff, really getting into, to more of the technical analysis and, and that kind of thing. So tonight will be, will be, will be one of those milestones where we'll, we'll be talking about the growth alternative process. You know, why we plan for growth in Edmonds. We'll talk about the first, which is very important, which was in your packet, the methodology that we use to apply the growth, the growth targets to Edmonds through those two alternatives that you have seen in your packet. We'll talk about the concepts and the approach that we used to define centers and hubs. And then we'll get into the draft, the two draft alternatives. One, citywide distribution, and, and then obviously the centers and hubs. The one thing I wanted to take note is that there is also a no action alternative, and that is required through the environmental impact statement, so that you'll see that there. And then we'll talk about what's next in terms of, as, as we're all committed to is really keeping transparency in this process and keeping the public up to date and in the loop, providing those opportunities for input. So, next slide, please. And Kate, I'm going to pass it to you.
Oh, okay. Thanks, Susan. Hi, everyone. Nice to be back and excited to share what we've been doing with you all. And so, you know, I think this slide, if we kind of take a moment to look at it, it's showing you really what today's meeting, we're going to go over at a high level, and we're really excited to share this information with everyone. So this is a summary of the work that we've really been doing since we completed our neighborhood meetings in December. What we've been working on are shown in that today's meeting boxes. We're validating the growth that's required and the affordability level of that growth in order to do the comp plan update. So it's sort of the target conversation. In order to achieve those targets, we're, we went through a process to try to come up with some key themes and approaches. And then lastly, we put together sort of the puzzle pieces of those first two boxes to come up with those first draft alternatives. And that's what we, the planning board, the city, and ultimately the public will get to really comment on, and those get pushed forward and really will land after we go and validate and we absorb the comments. We go to the March open house, we gather input, we talk to the city council, and they kind of land and stop shifting around really in April. So again, today's meeting, we're really showcasing this for the first time and going to walk you through how we got there. And you do have reference materials that I may point out while I summarize some of these things. In your packet, there's a summary of really what we talked about last time we were there in November, that in existing conditions, that first cut and assessment of the things and the key initiatives that Edmonds has been working on is summarized, as well as a methodology memo that is quite technical. And some, some of what we'll be going over today helps to explain that. So as you're listening to the presentation, maybe park this, if you have a printout, park this slide somewhere and, you know, kind of keep thinking about this in your minds. Are there, we really want to know from you, are there questions about our growth target methodology? And are we explaining this well? Secondly, how are you feeling about the centers and hubs approach to the growth alternatives? This is actually something that's kind of new for Edmonds, so it's an exciting thing to be able to talk about and see how you feel about it. Number three, we want to know if there are some red flags from your perspective, really about what's being proposed here. And then lastly, did we miss anything? What are your thoughts? So again, after we talk with you tonight, we'll have the ability to make some changes and then some of these ideas will then go forward into the online open house in March. So first, just for some context, I think all of us here tonight and, and the public as well, we, we know why we're here and why we take the time to have this kind of civic conversation about planning. And the state of Washington and its Growth Management Act really gives us a great opportunity to have a civic conversation about that. And we know that part of the reason why we plan is to do a better job of enabling housing choice for more types of people and really achieving that kind of mix of land uses that we want to see in Edmonds. That second bullet point gets to thinking about equity and how can we equitably distribute housing and equitably distribute employment choices? And we'll really talk about that a lot when we start to think through our housing targets and what the state of Washington is now looking for in, in citywide comprehensive plans. The next one really is something that the planning board is very invested in and you, you all talk about a lot of, all the time. It's really how do we coordinate between what we're doing and our growth areas with our infrastructure needs and opportunities? And really understand at a high level where the city needs to invest. And the lastly, you know, there are questions around economic development, promotion of the key things that Edmunds would like to see with the cultural centers, a cultural arts and community, and then thinking about ways to generate revenue to allow for greater investments in city services. So like I said in my sort of opening statement, the consultant team has been coordinating and collaborating extensively with city planning staff to review your adopted plans and initiatives, and that's giving us some ideas on how to explore this future growth, really to the, to the end of land use changes. And one of the things that Roger said is very true. In the comprehensive plan, what we're doing is we're thinking about policy level land use changes and categories. We're not talking about implementing ordinances or zoning or details around height or design or things that really would be happening either in a zoning code or a sub area plan. So we are keeping it pretty high in level, but there's still a lot to talk about. Some of the initiatives that really helped lend our, our ideas that you heard tonight are the Prose Park Plan, the Climate Action Plan, the Reimagining Neighborhoods, the ADU Code Updates that you all have been going through recently, the Citizens Housing Commission, which was a really great document that we reviewed and you, you should see reflected somewhat in the alternatives tonight. And then, of course, the Washington State House Bill Legislation. And lastly, I'm sure some of you participated in the comprehensive plan meetings in December where we got to hear firsthand about neighborhood level opportunities and challenges. So this slide is actually the same as when we were last with you. This shows really what the county and the Growth Management Act are, are setting us up to think about as we do our comprehensive plan update. So just the straight demographics, Edmonds is projected to grow by 13,000 people over the next 20 years. And Washington State, you know, we really try to balance out jobs and housing units to really think about the jobs housing balance. Tonight, we're not going to talk too much about jobs because in some ways we don't, we don't need to, it's not really something we need to spend a lot of time worrying about. And you can see there's a section in your methodology memo that actually goes into the jobs in some more detail. But Edmonds currently has capacity for 2,500 jobs and capacity for 500 jobs must be added. The last bullet point, we'll spend a lot of time talking about tonight. Edmonds has currently 19,000 housing units, so that's in the bar chart in the dark blue, and capacity for 5,000 units. So when you go one bar to the right and you see the green, that's the current zone capacity. So a lot of that capacity is actually in that Highway 99 corridor. However, what we need to do in order to meet those population targets is that orange bar. It's that required capacity of 9,000 units. So the big question that I'll spend the next, I don't know, four or five slides on, which really relates directly back to that methodology memo, is how we need to think about those 4,000 units that we're trying to plan for. And so I'll be talking about those 4,000 units that really correlate to the changes and what we can assume in our single family neighborhoods because we are really change, we're effectively changing the amount of capacity in the green bar because we are complying with those house bills. And I'll, I'll get to that in a second. So this slide here, which looks like a lot, but we are going to walk you through each one through five, is really some of those high level approaches that helps us plan for those targets, that growth target. So like I said, I'm going to walk you through number one, which is update the city's approach to single family detached land use zones to comply with house bills. So by the time I'm done, we should all know a little bit more about what I mean there. And then Susan is going to walk you through number two, which is really this neighborhood center and neighborhood hub strategy that also will supplement and really help us meet our new growth targets. And then complimentary to that, we have number three, four, and five. And so those are more policy level changes to kind of rethink some of those big general policies and land use policies to encourage the things that Edmonds would like to see. So number three, really rethink the downtown waterfront activity center land use policies to encourage uses that contribute to Edmonds Art District and downtown local businesses. Number four, explore the potential to accommodate some growth, focused growth in the medical district along the Highway 99 corridor. And you'll remember there is a medical district that's been identified through that Highway 99 sub area plan. And number five, we've already heard about a little bit tonight. It's really be curious and evaluate that kind of transition between Highway 99 and the sub area vicinity. So with that, I'm going to go back to number one there, which is important because what, reevaluating how these house bill compliance works in Edmonds means that the amount of capacity that we're planning for will shift. Because effectively, the state of Washington no longer really allows single family detached housing. So each of these house bills, which are discussed in your method memo, HB 1110, HB 1337, and HB 1220, each interact with each other and they force us to think about how we're shifting around how much capacity Edmonds actually already has once they comply with these house bills. That means, you know, maybe you have 10 single family homes. Of those single family homes, there may be a situation in which someone decides to add a second unit, to add an ADU, or to do something else that's enabled like a, a four per lot or a duplex. What our methodology memo summarizes and what I'll take you through is how we understand those development scenarios and what we think that does for Edmonds' housing capacity. So starting on the left, HB 1110, this is colloquially known as the missing middle housing bill. So what this one does is it applies to all single family zoned, all single family land use categories. And it allows for at least two homes per lot. It also allows for a quad, four homes per lot if the, that land, if that parcel is located within a quarter mile walking distance of a major transit stop, like the Swift BRT stop or the Amtrak station in Edmonds. And so those are allowed as of right. In most of Edmonds, that does not apply because the four per lot only allow, is only allowed if one of the homes goes through a process and is designated affordable. So that's HB 1110. HB 1337 is really the accessory dwelling unit bill. So this one, I think you've heard about and have been working, working with the city on understanding, but this is really allowing two ADU units in all single family zoning districts. And the last one is a little different. This is HB 1220. I don't know how familiar, familiar, familiar you are all with this tonight. But this one really takes the land capacity analysis process in Washington State and asks cities to think through their required capacity to differentiate between affordability levels. So the state is really asking us to pay attention to how much it costs to build different types of housing. And they've provided guidance to help us understand what we should be assuming. And what that second bullet point is saying is that as we're going through this planning process, it's the onus is on the city to make sure that we are planning sufficient capacity for each of the different kinds of required housing types. So one of the things to know about HB 1220 is that the state of Washington, in its process of really thinking about housing affordability and addressing the housing crisis, has done the, has produced some guidance to think about, well, how do we actually plan for affordability and tied housing types to affordability levels? They've also produced two different tables or assumed categories of how this might work in both moderate cost communities and high cost communities. So it's more expensive to build in a high cost community because the land values are higher. And that was one thing that we discovered as we were developing our capacity assessment is that Edmonds actually falls into the bucket of a high cost community. And you can see, we can read about that in the methodology memo. And also here, we have the highlights on the slide, is that the average sale price for a middle housing unit, and by that I mean sort of that low scale moderate or low density housing, the town home, the duplex, triplex, or a quad. So just things that kind of fit right in there into a single family neighborhood are still quite expensive. And you may know that anecdotally, that, you know, if you're trying to buy a town home in Edmonds, it's still expensive. Our, our real estate consultant did some research, and in the last two years in Edmonds, the average sale price was around $720,000 with no sales below $590,000. According to the Commerce Guidance, those sale prices would really need to be below $400,000 for Edmonds to go down into the lower, the lower cost category. And that means that that sale price would really correspond to someone paying a rent or mortgage payment that would be considered affordable at under 120% AMI. So that's a lot of technical information, but it's really, between these two slides, it's really forced us to think clearly and show our work on how we're making these assumptions. So again, you have this table also in your packet in the methodology memo. And this is directly taken from that Department of Commerce Guidance for the high cost community that helps us understand as we're doing these land use alternatives and making these assumptions, as well as planning for what kinds of land uses we need to see to hit our targets, how we translate between affordability levels, housing types, and zone category. So I refer to this table a lot. If you want to understand, you know, kind of keep it out there somewhere, you can refer back to it. But I think there's really two rows that for me really helped me understand. And that is, well, we'll walk through them. The first one really is this low density category, and there's a lot of Edmonds that fits there. That's that detached, single family home, and those are higher income. So that's really hitting a higher income target. We have the moderate density, which is the next row, and that's again, that, that HB 1110, town homes, duplex, triplex, and quads, those kind of expensive, smaller, comfortable, family size units. And then we start to shift down, you can see those middle categories where you start to get into like your apartment buildings. And there's, Commerce is really separating those out into the lower ones. Really, these are, you know, smaller units that have shared staircases, two to three floors. So those are low rise multifamily, then we have mid rise multifamily and high rise, which doesn't apply here in Edmonds. And then we have ADUs, and I found this one to be also interesting because that, those ones, if you look over to the column all the way on the right, the capacity that we can assume for our land use, for our land use assumptions is really still in the moderate income. So that's between 80 and 120% AMI. So keep this table around, you'll, you may want to refer to it. And then this table is also paired on the same page in your method memo. This kind of takes, that does that crosswalk between these categories and the typical housing types and those affordability levels. So what we've done here is we've kind of circled all of these units that the county has shown us. These are units that we're trying to accommodate in the low rise or mid rise apartment or condo type because it meets that affordability category. The ADUs over here in purple, they could either be in that moderate income category or they could also be in any category to its left, right? They could also be mid rise apartments, and the same goes for that in red. And that's your more single family detached or your higher income units. So all of our 9,000 total unit capacity has to fit into these buckets in order to comply with HB 11220. So I didn't invent the rules, but I think we're starting to really understand what we're, what we're aiming for. So this last slide here shows your crosswalk and really our total capacity that we need to plan for in our land use alternatives. So there's a lot of information on this slide. On the left, we have some math that shows us, shows you how we got to that 2,700. And on the right, we have a pie chart or a bar chart that shows you what that actually looks like, just visually. So you, if you're a visual person, you can see that where on the blue, those are the required units in our, from the county. So you can see on that first agglomeration there, that first bucket is the low rise or mid rise apartments. And we're required to meet 6,814 units, but we already have zone capacity for 4,862. So that, that red box there is what we have, is the target we have to meet. And then the ADUs, hey, you know, H bill compliance, HB 1337 and HB 1110, that helps us with our middle bucket with the ADUs. We've actually already met 1,600, about 1,650 units there by complying with the state law. And then last one, similarly, it's much smaller because Edmonds is already a high cost community. So much of our housing targets are really pushed into that higher need category. We still meet some of those housing units through compliance. This one should not be a hard one for Edmonds to meet. So if you go back to the bolded number there, that total capacity increase needed of 2,700, our land use alternatives, this is kind of like, if you're on the football field, this is like the goals, right? We're trying to get down to the 2,700 mark. And as we're developing our land use alternatives, we may think about strategies that go a little bit beyond that 2,700, and that's okay at this stage because we can always pare back. One of the things that we want to think about is during the EIS process and this land use alternatives process, is that we're trying to test for impact of, you know, where we're placing the density, where we're exploring growth. So I think, think about 2,700 units as our target, but I don't think we, at this point, need to be super precise about this target as this is going to shift around somewhat as we narrow in on our strategies and our approaches. So actually, I think that is my last slide, and I hope I didn't talk too fast and confuse everyone. Again, all of this is really detailed out in the methods memo. And I think it's, it's very helpful to kind of get the walkthrough and then look at the tables and really understand what the state is asking us to do. And I think there's also, if you're very interested in it, there's actually a fair amount of guidance that the Washington, Washington State Department of Commerce has available online that can really walk you through, really, these kinds of sea changes and how we're thinking about planning for housing in our region and in our state. So with that, and I can't see anyone. I, I can conclude.
Thank you so much, Kate. I think that was a lot of information synthesized in a digestible way, but maybe it's just me, because I've seen it before, so I may be biased. I'm going to, I'm going to take it from here, so, so the baton has, has been transferred. But as Kate mentioned, the, you know, we didn't set the rules, but I think what, in, in kind of digesting this material and outlining it in the methodology, what we've learned is it really, by applying these rules, we've really identified what our key needs are in Edmonds. So it's really not a surprise, we're a high cost community. We, we don't, you know, we could, we could benefit from housing choices for families and particularly for low income. And so whilst the rules, you know, put us, can find us to a bit of a structure, it's, it really also makes our needs transparent. What we are trying to do is take those needs and really, and really look for the opportunities that are contextually appropriate for Edmonds, that really meet the interests that we heard from our, our community conversations to date. And, and then obviously, we want to hit that, that, that housing target and, and so we can comply. So in terms of the, the general approach, there's a concept in, in urban planning called the 15 Minute City. Many of you may have heard of this concept, but for those you, who you haven't, it's an urban planning concept that was created in 2016, but really it mimics another one created in 1920, right? So, you know, as, as anybody, fitness trends or planning trends, right? They just are created by, you know, different needs, right? So in 1920, it was called really focusing on the neighborhood unit. In 2016, it became 15 Minute City. It was really, became very popular during the pandemic when, when Paris really went all in in creating 15 minute cities through, through transforming their streets to make them really conducive for, for walking and biking. And that being said, a lot of cities struggle with the 15 minute concept because of the Euclidean zoning, what we've talked about here in the past, the planning board, is that a lot of cities have operation based centers, right? So we separate out land uses, and that makes it a little bit more challenging to get place to place because of the need to drive longer distances. So really thinking about compact cities, the 15 minute city concept, and thinking about how Edmonds really loves the neighborhoods, right? We really talked to folks at the neighborhood meetings about loving their neighborhoods, really wanting to enhance and increase the number of amenities there. So the 15 minutes, the, the opportunity statement is listed there. Really, most daily necessities and services can easily be reached by a 15 minute walk, bike ride, or public transit ride. This also aligns with our climate action plan and our interest to really drive down our carbon emissions, not only from the built environment, which is 40% of our carbon emissions come from buildings, but also 40% from transportation. So really looking at that compact, compact neighborhood, compact city concept aligns with a lot of the community interest of driving sustainability and climate related actions. But also, from an economic development standpoint, there was a 19, there was a 2018 article from the Brookings Institute that talks about, there's an urgency and opportunity for local and regional leaders to embrace and advance place led development that produces better economic outcomes for more people in more places. And so really, I think that's what we're really trying to combine here is, is about the place making component, working with what we have, the infrastructure in which is afforded within our neighborhood centers and hubs, and building off them to make them more vibrant and economically prosperous. So next slide, please, please. So how did we identify what was a center and what was a hub? So that, it's important to start there. We identified common attributes of centers as having potential for redevelopment. So some areas of underutilization to, to meet community goals and enhance public realm. Number two, the location has existing retail or other commercial businesses. These are at maybe a larger format, obviously, than our hubs. So examples of those, you know, the, the Bark, right? The, the animal hospital in Five Corners, larger scale at, at Westgate, the grocery stores, right? So larger formats, retail and commercial. We, there are moderate scale existing multifamily residential in these locations as well. And all of them have in common a good And all of them have in common a good multimodal access with transit. And so that's, that is key. We heard a lot from the community about, you know, building out that sidewalk infrastructure, having better access to transit, more transportation options. And so really, starting with the places that have that in existence is going to, you know, obviously save us an infrastructure and have the ability to expand those networks through the benefit of development. The hubs, so the hubs are the, the smaller scale, but, but still have the potential for redevelopment. These are the, this, the, you know, the sliver, sliver of Perrinville in which is in Edmonds. And so example of that, you know, kind of that, that the post office building and the, and the vacant lot that's across the street. The smaller scale includes mix of land uses, retail and commercial businesses. We find unique is the North Bowl with the, with the gas station on the corner in Portofino, the single-story now small-scale retail that exists there. This area may also include low-rise apartments or missing, missing middle housing. I find interesting adjacent to the North Bowl, there is a five-story apartment building. And it was interesting that it goes from five to one, right? So looking at those opportunities. The hubs are also, the hubs also provide good multimodal access. So each of these hubs do have transit access. So that's also exciting. Next slide. So, and, and looking at what would be a prototypical neighborhood center development, what we're looking at are, I'm looking for opportunities to accommodate additional growth, as I mentioned, while providing those larger-scale amenities with the economic development opportunity. So we're exploring adjustments to land use designations in the centers by affording approximately three to four-story mixed-use residential, but going up to five stories with incentives. And I'm going to talk about this in just a second. Next slide. On the other side of that, the neighborhood hubs, as I have said, smaller scale, but still providing those placemaking opportunities, opportunities for public realm enhancements. Again, with that fifteen-minute city concept, the ability to, for a quick walk or bike ride for neighborhood amenities. So the growth alternatives for, for the hubs will explore land use changes that enable a more diverse land use mix, first off, and then smaller-scale retail and residential with approximately three stories with up to five within senates. So we'll talk about that, like I said, in just a second. Next slide, please. Right. So these, in terms of the nomenclature, these are the scales. So the top is the, the lower density, as you go down, is the higher density. So the words in which we're using, neighborhood residential. This is what Kate was talking about in terms of eleven-ten and thirteen-thirty-seven compliance. This applies to all of our existing single-family residential zones. So in the packets, you'll see that this is, on the maps, this is the area in, in like a yellowish color. The low-scale multifamily are basically three-story apartments or condominiums. The low, that's specifically just multifamily. And then we have low-scale mixed use, which would afford ground floor retail in select locations. Mid-scale mixed use, again, affording that mix, that mix of uses, particularly on the ground floor for retail and commercial. And finally, high-rise, or sorry, high-scale, which we really only have in select areas, would be afforded up to seven stories. Next slide. So I want to, I had mentioned this earlier around incentives, and I want to just pause here to say that that in our, when we're looking at capacity, we have the ability to, to set a base, a base density. So that would be like a number, let's say, the three stories would be our base density allowance. And then through incentives that would consist of things like expansion of the sidewalk network beyond what a developer would typically be willing, or not willing, required to do. The creation of, of public space, you know, looking at privately-owned public space amenities in the neighborhood. That would afford the developer to do an extra story or two, again, develop, depending upon ultimately how the code is written. So our ability to, to write in those incentives as options, also, we can take the the maximum number of floors that would, would be allowed per incentive and use it towards our capacity. So I want to just pause there to say, right? So even though the base would only be three stories, the base allowance, with two, perhaps with incentives, we'd be able to use that whole five-story for the capacity within this, within this calculation. Now, but it's not only about, right, our, our ability to use it. It's what we get on the ground as the outcome, as we should be looking at. And what we get as the outcome is really indicative in Seattle, where they, they've had robust bonus density programs for quite a long time. Now, obviously, Seattle's a different scale. We're talking about high-rise, but we're talking about low to mid-rise. But the concept is the same. So oftentimes, you can gain an extra floor if you provide, in this instance, in Seattle, childcare, affordable childcare within, within the, within the building, or provide a neighborhood open space, as I mentioned earlier. Seattle also has a robust green street program where, you know, you get an extra floor if you actually have a well be above and beyond public realm improvements that includes, you know, high-level landscape amenity, broad, you know, broad and expansive sidewalks that go beyond your block, right? So you're actually building out maybe an extra, an extra half-block of sidewalks that you wouldn't normally be required to do. So this is really responsive to what the community is interested in, is really thinking about that infrastructure connection to growth. Next slide. Okay, so we're going to go over these, these three alternatives. The first one's pretty easy. Straight forward. So the first one is the no-action alternative. This alternative is not compliant with the Washington State Growth Management Act requirements. And in fact, Washington State recently put out a model code, basically exemplifying what would be required of cities if we did not comply with these house bills. And it would be a, a universal height requirement of
Thirty-five, I believe. And so the model goes supersedes any city that decides to try to go with no action.
So no action may be misrepresented. It'd be quite a, quite a change, particularly for downtown Edmonds, if that was the thirty-five feet change. Okay, next slide. Okay, so luckily, you've had these in your packets. They are, at glance, can look similar, but I want to make sure that I spend some time really differentiating these options for you. The first one is focused growth. I like to call this centering Edmonds. This is really focused on the neighborhood center. So it puts the majority of capacity within the neighborhood centers. The neighborhood centers for this purpose and for this discussion include Firdale Village, Westgate, and Five Corners. It also includes, it also includes a medical district expansion. So the medical district expansion would be west of Highway ninety-nine subarea, only just in the proximity of Edmonds Woodway High School, where there is existing medical office buildings along seventy-six. And some, some opportunity for, for really supplementing that both economically, but also looking at uses that would complement the medical office uses, such as whether it's hotel stays for, for folks that are using the medical facilities, as well as housing for, for workers in that area. So the, this option, which is called focused growth, also includes a, a really slight increase in neighborhood hub capacity. So this would be, would allow for two to three stories in the neighborhood hubs. I should have mentioned that the neighborhood center, as I previously mentioned, would afford four to six stories. Now, these are including the incentives that I mentioned. So this is still point of conversation. Those, these, these number of stories haven't been set, right? We're just saying four to six stories. We would assume maybe four stories at base, two stories with incentive allowance. But we have not defined those yet. The medical district expansion, again, we can see being four to six stories, again, with, with, with those bonus heights through incentives. The, the circles on the map for focused growth, as well as alternative, which I'll go over in a second, shows, shows the fifteen-minute neighborhoods. So that's a three, those circles represent three-quarters of a mile that so most daily necessities could be done through walk, bike, and transit within, within that fifteen-minute zone. So make it, so what I wanted to, to really emphasize there is it gets pretty good coverage across Edmonds with that fifteen-minute concept. Obviously, still a little bit challenged north of one ninety-sixth in that regard. But next slide, please. Okay, so alternative B also, you know, again, focuses on neighborhood centers and hubs. It, it basically puts more moderate growth within the neighborhood centers compared to the previous option. And so the, the allowance would be four to five stories within the neighborhood centers, so going down one story. But then going up one story in the neighborhood hubs. So really, right? So, so taking, taking it up a notch for the neighborhood hubs, taking it down a notch for the neighborhood centers in the distributed growth option. So the let's see, the and this option does not include the medical district expansion. Now, something I want to, this is a great opportunity to say that this is an à la carte opportunity. Whilst in the EIS, we need to study these alternatives. That means, as what Kate said, we're going to be analyzing all aspects of these alternatives and articulating impacts. From that, we can pick and choose what our preferred alternative is. Right? So if we decide that, oh goodness, you know, it was a real opportunity to, for the medical district, we would have liked to have seen that in our, in our distributed growth option. That is still a chance, and we will have already analyzed the impacts associated with it. So it's really important that when we say in our discussion with the planning board this evening, if there's anything missing, is there anything we should be studying or looking at that we haven't? This is the time to put it on the table because we really need to make sure the EIS covers the options in which we want to explore. Okay, next slide. So in summary, this is basically showing how the alternatives, oh, sorry, alternatives differ. So the areas of change for the focused growth, like I said, majority of capacity in neighborhood centers with slight changes to the extents. Right? So that's the broadening, the area in which density can go. With this, the focus growth has the slight increase in capacity in neighborhood hubs, and it includes the medical expansion. Again, with the distributed growth, moderate increase in capacity in neighborhood centers with a moderate increase in capacity in neighborhood hubs. I'm not going to read all of these, but you can see under the housing typology, this really speaks to the number of stories. But a great way to summarize it, in my opinion, in your head is, you know, you know, the focused growth goes, goes one story up for neighborhood centers, one story down for neighborhood hubs. And then it, it, it basically takes that story down for neighborhood centers and takes it up for neighborhood hubs. So really just pretty modest differences, to be quite honest with you. But but really, thinking about our overall target, it's, it's, the good news is that it's achievable through both of these, both of these needs. For both options, we see a huge benefit in offering development incentives. I, I think this is a great option for Edmonds. We've, we've talked a long time about our interest in expanding sidewalks and getting high-quality public amenities within our neighborhoods, not only the centers, but also our hubs. And so it's a great opportunity to do that. Okay, so how will we know if we succeeded? So it lends in which we're looking at this well first. Let's make sure we're consistent with the Growth Management Act, the PRC Vision twenty fifty, and our Snohomish County, County-wide planning policies. Check, right? Stay within the rules. We want to implement the, the state housing bills, and we want to do so in a positive way that, that fits into the context of Edmonds. And third, we want to make sure we, we, we hit that mission statement, right? The, the mission statement that we put in the beginning of this, in the beginning of this plan, right? We've spent a lot of time on it. We had a lot of conversations on it. A lot of people weighed in to develop it. And so making sure that that vision statement is, is met is very important. And I think that's a hope what we keep going back to as we're evaluating these options. Next slide. So that is where we pause. A lot of information.
It's proficient. Well, before we get into round two of the presentation. Next.
And we don't have much left.
Okay. So I was thinking we could take the next twenty, twenty-five minutes to kind of deliver different sections. Turn it up to the floor. Bernie, comments, questions, clarifications?
Here I go first. I got a full list of questions, but I'll tell you what, I'll do three, and then I'll rather just jump the sentence that. I'll do, I'll start with my easier questions first. So on the map that showed the bus lines,
Yeah.
were they all there? Is that it for Edmonds?
Yeah, those are the slides.
Okay.
Unfortunately.
Yeah, it's not very many. Okay. And then is the fifteen-minute neighborhoods sort of a policy direction that's underpinning the alternatives? Because when I think about, you know, these are EIS alternatives, and when you do the plan, you're going to go through discussion about alternatives, but then come up with a preferred recommendation, right? And as you say, it could be à la carte.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Because you'll do the analysis on the, these basic things. So I would, what I'm accustomed to seeing in comprehensive sort of policy drivers for those alternatives. So I'm not sure what those are, and I would love to hear the direction for those. In order to see how you're thinking that will end up with an alternative that we're recommending, regardless of what went to the EIS. Because I guess the EIS alternatives, you have to have three. In my mind, that no alternative is throwaway. But I know it has to be there. So I guess I'd be interested in hearing what are the policy drivers that you're looking at in order to determine what actually the plan would end up moving towards?
Yeah, I can answer that, then, if you have anything to weigh in. Or other than this, I would just say that the reason for including our existing conditions memo and that basically that includes our policy framework research is that you can't just answer that in, in a single go, right? We have a lot of policy drivers, so many policy drivers. Is the existing comprehensive plan is, is one of them amongst all the other documents that we've researched in that policy framework that's in the existing conditions memo. You started that question by saying, is the fifteen-minute neighborhood a policy driver? It's really an approach, and you know, it's an, it's an approach that we think encompasses all of the policies in which are relevant that we've put into that existing conditions memo. Kate, do you have more to offer? Anyone else on the team?
Yeah, and I, I went back to this slide because I know when we talked about it when we started, you, you know, you were seeing it for the first time, and I want to revisit it now because I think it kind of helps us think about where we are in the process. We have these approaches and themes that, as Susan was saying, are responsive to the initiatives and the policy direction that Edmonds has throughout in its reimagining neighborhoods, the Climate Action Plan, the Citizens Housing Commission, the existing comp plan, the waterfront issues study, a, a whole host of different things that, you know, you can kind of flip through and see the summary in the existing conditions memo. But I think one of the challenges of planning is really about trying to synthesize all of that information. It's really this process of overlaying information so that you come up with a sum that's greater than the whole. So that you come up with, um, a sum that's greater than the whole. Um, or the the whole that's greater than the sum of its parts, right? That's what those land use alternatives are trying to do. And when you look at this, we have these different approaches, um, that we can start to think about. Those policy approaches that are also going to help us achieve them. So it's a little bit, we're in the beginning process. Of developing even some of these policy statements that are going to. Enable some of these choices and approaches that we're hearing. Or emerging from your other documents. So you can think about where we are now is, you know. In our schedule, we need to be developing and setting up those EIS land use assumptions so that. We have enough time to do that impact assessment. Then we have, um, a period of time in which we're thinking through, to your point about the policy approaches. We can start to really narrow in and understand those themes and what. We may be wanting to update in your existing comprehensive plan. Um, that really helps us understand and focus and get to that preferred. Growth alternative, as you were talking about later this summer. So that's kind of coming. Um, in July, actually. So we have some time between now, this sort of first cut. And when we'll be really getting into the policy discussion. Does that help?
Excuse me, it does, although.
Okay.
Kind of feels like the cart before the horse.
It does. Yeah, but you do have, you have to kind of start somewhere. So, and I think that this, if you have a look, and I I don't expect that you will have looked at the existing conditions memo. But that's what this is really getting to, is this sense of, you know, Edmonds actually has a very strong. Sense of identity, and it's really moving even from some of the public comment thing we heard tonight, and really a lot of the comments and the themes. Um, that Susan may have shared with you from those planning meetings in December, we have a lot to work with. So I think, you know, stay tuned and and we'll continue to talk it through.
Reveal the floor to my colleagues, and I'll come back and ask more questions later.
Uh, I have a couple of questions. One was, was the area, uh, on seventy-sixth and one ninety-sixth. The portion that is Edmonds considered for a hub or center? That seemed to be an area of the map in both alternatives that I think could benefit from some consideration. At least for the portion that. The half that we have. Um, so that was one question. Um, and then the other was.
Oh, did you say hub or center?
I I don't know what it would, you know, like, I don't, I don't know.
I was thinking hub because I had the same thought.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's, it seems like if, uh, if the North Bowl hub is.
Yeah.
You know, it it seems kind of similar to that at the the top of the hill there.
Yeah.
Um. And then my other question was, do both alternatives. Utilize the Highway ninety-nine subarea plan and in the same way? Um, and maybe we could touch on that because it seemed like to Teresa's comment. That, uh, packet, page seventy-five has the mention of transition zones. But seventy-four doesn't. So I'm just curious how, if the different alternatives have a different approach to Highway ninety-nine at all.
Yeah, so, um, so both and forgive me, because like, I think in the packet, we may not have articulated the the transition zones.
In in, well, yeah, so now, so tonight's presentation, it was, uh, an air caught, actually.
Yeah.
And so with something that we are considering for both, um, alternatives. And also, um. Remember that, uh, this being the discussion for, uh, the the goals alternatives. The, um, Highway ninety-nine is something that we'll be considering for, I think, for. The policy, but it's not going to affect those numbers considerably. So it's.
So to clarify, both alternatives are gonna have the same approach for the Highway ninety-nine area.
Yeah, looking at the transitioning down, uh, at the edges and then that the transit, the opportunity to transition. Uh, a little bit on the edge of that.
Okay.
At a policy level, right, Susan?
Absolutely, yes.
Yeah.
It's a follow up.
Yeah, go for it.
So if you, you're talking about down zoning a portion of it and up zoning another portion.
Correct, yeah.
And so, and that yields the same number of units.
And this.
Of units.
At this, at this level.
At this level. So if it's the same, if if it's the same number of units, if you don't do that, then why are you doing, are you putting that in here?
You know, I think when you look at, you know, in the concept of the urban transect, and people talk about the awkwardness of the, you know, stark transition between, uh, between seventy-five feet and the single family. Right? Uh, and so really thinking about how to afford, um, re- retention of the seventy-five feet. Uh, whilst whilst going down to to fifty-five and then going down to more of like a a thirty, let's say. Uh, and then ultimately would be the middle housing for the rest of it, as it is for the rest of the city. Does that make sense of looking at, really at stepping it down? Across that, across that subarea.
So did not the ordinance that council passed last year accomplish the transition that the neighborhood was looking for?
Um, the, I mean, you mean in step, that step back from fifty-five feet? Uh, I mean, again, this is. Whilst, I think it perhaps met it for, again, the, was it the lens? Uh, impact of height. Right? So it's, but it's still, I think, an opportunity just kind of to. That one of the things is that you would. The height allowance was still seventy-five feet, so making it more clear to turnovers, right, like. Seventy-five feet, fifty-five, or whatever that appropriate number is, and just be more clear with the, uh, with the, with the outright zoning allowances as opposed to the design standards.
So you can't downzone, like you're talking about, without adding in more multiple family. Regardless of whether it went there or somewhere else, you'd need to offset the loss is what you're getting at?
I think that's what, that is what our point was for both. Yeah, we wanted to offset that. Kate, do you want to speak to that anymore, or is it?
All feedback?
Yeah, no, I think it's good feedback.
Yeah.
I don't have any.
I would say just in general, like, I understand the hubs and the centers of these approaches. I don't necessarily understand. Where we're at with Highway ninety-nine.
Yeah, yeah.
So maybe going forward. Including that in this discussion would help with like an overall big picture.
I think that's a great comment, and I think we can add more thought to that, especially as it goes, this goes into its next rounds of public comment. So thank you for that.
Rich or Nick? You have any comments or questions? No? Okay, I have a few. Uh. There was a comment that we can always scale back. At some point, right?
Yeah.
Especially where we're identifying the EIS extents. Uh, and in my planning one-on-one knowledge, it's cores and corridors that should. Hold the most density because the infrastructure is there. Does it make sense to include the full one-on-four corridor as well? With the aspect of, just because of the multiple bus stops and whatnot.
And this is, again, the great, uh, planning board, uh, you know, deliberation. I would say that, uh, the corridors approach. In Edmonds, when, uh, when we discussed it. Felt a little. Uh, it didn't hit that place making, the aspect of place making, the way I think that this approach focusing on more of the. The core of these neighborhood centers and really building from the center. Uh, instead of building in this linear fashion that is, to me, more vehicular focused, right? You can kind of see that with, when you go on one-on-four, right? It's not something where you want to kind of hang out. And that's really what we're looking for is is coupling residential with a mix of uses that offer kind of that fifteen minute neighborhood.
I guess the benefit of what I see, including the full corridors going in EIS, is it provides a level of flexibility. To reach back out to the public, get their input, and then maybe redistribute how we deem fit, uh. When it comes time to do that, that's where I could just see it. Yeah, I agree with you. Definitely not a place making spot, um.
Yeah, and I think we were, you know, when we, and Kate, feel free to weigh in, or, uh. I think we were quite surprised when we started looking at the numbers, that we were able to achieve our target. Through these two strategies without kind of reaching.
Yeah.
Uh, and and so I guess that's the only thing I would mention is that I I think by doing that, we would probably overstep, uh, unless we we wanted to. To down, uh. Downplay, uh, or reduce capacity in some of these actions, and we would love to hear that. So let's, let's, let's hear like that conversation about. Uh, did we, you know, did we overstep, uh, you know, in terms of some of these areas? Should we, should we think about how we distribute it in a different way?
Uh, my second one, just want to make sure both, um. Focused in. Distributed growth, the downtown waterfront activity center. I can't really tell. Where that fits in reference to, if it looks like it's. I might just need to.
Yeah, great question. Uh, so the the downtown activity center, uh, and similar to Highway ninety-nine with their existing zone capacity. There wasn't much more to give. Now, now certainly with downtown, uh, that has to do with the very high land value. Uh, and Dan could probably speak to this more articulately, but basically it wasn't eligible for redevelopment unless we went up really high. Which then we're actually, uh, because of the height limits downtown, uh, you, we would need to make it. Pretty significantly higher in order for it to turn up.
I think there are some, uh, and one of those things on that approach slide that'll be more clear as we move forward. And I'll just go back to it now. That we didn't really speak to is is really building on and rethinking downtown's land use policies in order to. Um, achieve that Edmonds Art District and downtown local businesses. And some of that does mean that there's an opportunity to. And, you know, categorically organize downtown zoning. If you look at it, it's very, um. It's very, there's a lot of different things going on on individual parcels, and there's some opportunity to regularize. And follow some, you know, best practices about land use policy in terms of enabling live work. Um, small scale, you know, um, residential apartments. And really trying to promote the streets and neighborhoods that, um, we heard from the community they were interested in. None of. The approach there on three is getting us to our capacity. Because we're not really up zoning or adding many more units. We don't see from what's already been enabled. Through your existing zoning in downtown. So remember, there's a whole host of units in the Buildable Lands Report that we already counted towards our targets. So we're just not really. Touching that too much in this conversation, but I I think taking your comment to make sure that we explain that somewhere.
I think it's an equity, it's an equity thing too, you know, like the connotation at Edmonds is the bull gets. All the incentives and the cores and corridors beyond the bull is shouldered with one hundred percent of the density increases.
Yeah.
Try to.
We, we.
Level that out a little bit.
Yeah, we had a lot of, we had a lot of conversations about this within our team, and it, uh, would start to become really, uh, the lines became blurred when we started talking about. Policies that we want to, uh. Evaluate, enact, and putting them on the map, even though if they didn't have, uh. Even if they didn't contribute to our our capacity and to that twenty-seven hundred, you know, number. Uh, and so that's what we tried to stay true to, is only showing on the map really the, uh, the, uh, the unit counts. Uh, the thing that the capacity generating areas. Um, Highway ninety-nine was a little bit of a, a, you know, a flea from that. Because we really did want to show that we all, we want to respond to the interest of transition zones. And whilst I know it's a ripe conversation to still be had, uh, I want to make sure that we we start that, uh, in talking about if. If there is interest of down zoning, that we that we really talk about it universally here as part of the unit conversation. Because it is very relevant because of the existing capacity on Highway ninety-nine in the subarea. And the need, the the need to, uh, to basically offset that. So that that's why this, this, the Highway ninety-nine. Note was mentioned, but that we didn't make notes within the downtown.
Got you. Okay, one more, and then I'll.
Yeah.
Field it. Where, on the housing type classification slide. Where would like cottage, courtyard housing, linework, lofts, groundstones, like where would that type of variety live?
It's here in in this moderate density category.
Thank you.
And so if you look over here at the affordability level, that's one of our higher income levels, and that's due to this, uh, slide here. Of Edmonds being a high cost community. And this finding, and you can see the sources for this in that methods memo, it's really about. The land value. In Edmonds is quite high, so you need to build a bigger building to cover the cost, right? And so if you're just building a duplex, it's still going to be pretty expensive, um, for the purchaser.
Thanks for follow up on that. How do you address the land value disparity throughout the city? Right? Because, you know, the. If you're basing your price, your average pricing of condos and duplexes on. The whole city, you have a large number of them with views in downtown Edmonds that are going to drive that price up. And push all of that housing into the higher bracket versus, uh, you know, areas that are. You know.
Cheaper.
Yeah, and cheaper to buy land. So, you know, do you, do you get some? Like, do you, do you have to take the whole city as a whole, or do you get any credit for those duplexes and fourplexes? That are maybe in areas closer to ninety-nine that would be a lower cost build?
Um, I, I can say, yeah, I, if we, uh, it just here, the fact that we just have no sales, uh, of the forty recent ones, and a lot of them are near ninety-nine. In fact, most of them are because that's where the land is cheaper. So that's where developers can, uh, actually buy the land and build up the units. There is virtually none on the west side of the city. Um, just the fact that there was none that were below five hundred ninety thousand, and it's so far away from that threshold of, uh, four hundred thousand. Um, it's just, uh, really not feasible, um.
Yeah.
Uh, to count that. But we we did everything we could to 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 slice the data and see, uh, to con- to confirm. Edmonds is in a high cost community, and there wasn't another way to slice it.
And just to rea- just to emphasize the point about the height allowance, right? There has to be a a scale of development that.
Yeah.
Allows that, uh, to turn over. And, um, and so. The land, you know, your land disparity question is, yeah, it it is solvable if we, you know, blow out the heights of the downtown.
Right.
But, right, it, is there, is there an appetite for that? And what, you know, so it. That's the conversation and really thinking about the feedback we've gotten to date from down, from the public around, really appreciating that, that. That character of downtown and that, that looking at scale, so.
So I want to follow on that, in part, thinking about the mid, the vision statement and maintaining charm and welcome. And to me, that that the charm isn't just about downtown, it's citywide. So if you go from these really tall buildings into the city, I don't know if that's going to change anything. And. And so when I look at this, I think about, so how do we disperse the need? And it's, and it's, it's a challenge because of the type of housing that is needed in the city. And if we could increase the number of hubs, does that enable us to keep the height of buildings around the city, not just downtown, but around the city? Lower. So in addition to what Lauren was pointing out, which I think you said was one ninety-sixth and seventy-sixth. You know, what about also, I think it's two, well. Twelve and seventy-six, is that considered part of the medical center?
Well, again, and that's only in one option, so, right?
I understand, but.
Could explore that in both options as well.
Yeah. Yeah. And then what about Wade James Theater? What about creating an area there? I think when we talk about equitable distribution, to me, that's not just about the income levels that we're able to provide for. It's also where it hits in the city and what kind of of communities they they create. And on some level, how much do we drive by place making versus taking what Jeremy's saying, stretch it out a little bit, may still be a fifteen minute walk, maybe on the highway. But when you look at the Westgate area is sort of why stop in a certain area just because you you could go further. And it may not necessarily contribute to place making, but if we can get the units out of it and allow us to keep the heights down, everybody can play, all I hear about all the time is, I don't want to be in the Ballard. I don't want to be like Shoreline. Well, guess what? That's six, seven stories and maybe even five. So thinking about it widespread, that sort of leads me to thinking about, so where else can we put these hubs? And and think about even seating those hubs where maybe there's just barely anything right now. But certainly at one ninety six and seventy six, there's already quite a bit there to work off of. It'd be great to find one in the north then. I realize that's really hard to come by.
Yeah, I know, same.
But I just think that part of the charm is that we don't put everything over in one place.
Yep. One thing I would make, just a comment, especially, you know, going out into Ballard in that area. One of the things about those heights is it is for miles that it is those heights. So one thing to keep in mind is as a pedestrian, if we're talking between four floors and five floors, it's not going to be as perceptible. But if it goes on for two miles, that probably will be noticed. So.
I mean, two miles on a stretch, not two miles deep.
Yeah, okay. So. That's what ninety nine is.
That's what ninety nine is, though. Yeah.
Which is why we're discussing the idea of.
The down zoning.
Yeah.
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 No, that's exactly what I was going to say. It's, it's, you know, we're, we're here to kind of look at those levers. So so everything's kind of on the table for discussion. We're showing you what what works to meet our targets here and and let's, let's talk about some different hubs. But again, it's the heights versus extents. And I think that's, you know, that's what we're, you know, we have some slides just to show what that, what that looks like, you know. And and so it really isn't huge amount of extents that we're really moderning these areas. It's really, we're trying to make up those gains in heights. So I think it's, it's just that conversation on heights versus extents.
Yeah, I think you've nailed it actually. And there may be some compromise in there to find where your height may not exceed your five levels. And you have to give up on your extent in order to do that. And I asked one other question. You were on slide seventy five, I think it was. Which circle on there denotes the fifteen minute neighborhood? Is it the bigger one or is it the colored circle?
The bigger ones.
The big one, that's what I thought. Okay, yeah, yeah. So all the more reason why not extend.
Out to those areas.
Get everything. Because just as a, as a, as a designer, also to go into talking about some of these incentives, a lot, oftentimes those incentives require a step back. And so you may have a ten foot step back for that one, for that one height increase. And so you physically don't see it from the sidewalk at all. So there's all kinds of different ways to be able to provide incentives and not hurt your sightlines. And so it's just, there's a thousand different ways to skin the cat on that. And so that's great discussion and opportunity to talk about work.
All right, just have one more.
Yeah.
Is there a reason to have a medical district expansion rather than another center or hub? Like, why call it that?
That's an interesting question, Kate.
Well, it's already called the medical district in the Highway ninety nine sub area plan. And if I were to zoom in on that, you can look at the sub area plan and the future land use map. There's this boundary here that splits it in the middle.
Okay.
So it's actually just trying to be clear that we're expanding from something that's been defined in the sub area plan. We're not opening up the sub area plan, but we want to build on it and leverage it. And one of the things, you know, when we look at that in more detail in the buildable lands map and the redevelopment, there's actually a fair amount of activity there. And already public facilities and the hospital and medical uses. But there, there hasn't been a lot of focused policy around it. And I think one of the exciting things for us to think through, and Susan sort of touched on this, is what does a health community look like around wellness? And kind of can we be more, can we be better about identifying, you know, wellness type uses? And one of the things I was also thinking about is some of ancillary kinds of residential tenures that are more like assisted living or senior housing or specialized long term stay or kinds of, you know, health and wellness uses that really would leverage and build from the hospital. As well as, you know, we know that we have the University of Washington purchasing and expanding north. So I think it's really there to have a provoke a kind of conversation in the sub area plan when we get to that policy level to think about how how we might thematically explore that. And I think in the detailed slides, Jeff, do we have, do we show the medical district expansion? I can't remember if it's in there.
Yeah, it is.
Okay, I I do feel like we're getting to some questions that it might be good to move to that next section.
That's Richard's hand.
Okay.
Yeah, I was just going to go ahead and just jump in. Thank you. I, you know, as we're talking about the fifteen minute area a little bit, you know, the, I've noticed and I know this is, it's easy, it's tougher to depict kind of maybe what I'm saying on on a map, two D map, but you know, everything seems pretty uniform. One of the questions that I had was, you know, are we looking at the three quarter mile or the fifteen minute neighborhood as taking into consideration the topography of some of these areas, right? There's a lot of hills in the areas, you know, so on and so forth. And, you know, if we're looking at something like, you know, Westgate versus, you know, Perrinville person versus, you know, some of these other areas, Five Corners. You know, some of them are more hilly, some of them have, you know, better access throughout these areas. So, you know, I just wanted, you know, obviously keep that in mind as as we're looking at it. I I like a lot of the work that you guys are doing. I think that I really like the idea of the medical district expansion. I think that that just brings a lot of opportunity for focused kind of growth, not necessarily just in that area, but for just like what you said, Kate, is, you know, there's, there's a lot of opportunity, I think, with the University of Washington expanding. And I think that, you know, having some of these different areas that I think Judy mentioned it and other people mentioned it, that that make Edmonds so charming, right? I think that, you know, that just could add to it. So good work initially. I know it's not just the first time you've gone through it, but appreciate that, appreciate the work you've done.
Thanks.
Richard, I was going to just speak to the fifteen minute, what you had asked about topography. I think, you know, we were, we haven't gotten to that level of granularity, but I will say that what I'm really happy to note is that these are all on transit lines, which were for the vast majority of, and although Perrinville is also accessible. Anyway, and that, that's pretty significant, talking about Edmonds, right? I mean, so I think when we say fifteen minutes, say we include that transit access for those need, you know, that need that that hill assist, so to speak. So.
Yeah, and, and, you know, and I'm thinking of it too, as, you know, as we talk about, you know, you know, walkability, bikeability, you know, with transit options, all that type of stuff, you know, thinking of, you know, as a family with, you know, three mid to younger kids and, you know, one with disabilities, special needs. You know, fifteen minutes, obviously for us, this might be a little bit different than others, but also people that, you know, don't get around as easily. And then you add in, you know, some of these hills and and areas and areas that we don't have sidewalks within, you know, neighborhoods. I I think it's something to definitely, you know, I, with all of this, and I know we've talked a lot about, you know, infrastructure and 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 a lot about sidewalks, obviously. You know, that's going to be a big part of this as we go and we'll get more granular, obviously, but, you know, just kind of keeping that in our minds.
Yeah, no, thanks, Richard. I, I think this just goes to that, that discussion. I don't want to lose sight of, you know, as as we move through this is by right versus by incentive. And I, I think that what you spoke to around really gleaning the most amount of infrastructure improvements that we can within these neighborhood centers and hubs. If we, if we just allow development by right, capping it at a, you know, modest amount, we probably won't get that that expansion. But not saying we shouldn't, but we just need to think about those levers. Where we want it, where we, you know, really want to focus that infrastructure improvement versus where we, where you think that contextual character needs to stay at a low rise. So it's going to be a trade off. Okay.
All right, back to you, Susan.
Back to Jen, or to Jen.
To Jen. Jen, take your weight.
Yes.
Yeah. So one of the things that's been coming up that I've been thinking about is talking about high level and talking about like where we are and, you know, to Roger's, Roger's comment much earlier about not getting into the weeds so far into like other parcels and like the specific little parcels of this sales. But we do have to bring it in past those dots that we were showing you before and show how that starts to affect the area. And so I was just thinking that what we've done is we've started to look at the specific areas and how that would, directions that they would actually grow and they would move. And I'm like, oh, well, now we're looking at parcels. So. It's so, it, it, this is, I'm, I'm putting out a big ask to understand that we are not talking about, you know, sending the contractors over to one house that we're highlighting here or anything of the sort. That this is still talking about big moves, but this is what we're thinking of for the policy land use expansion and how that's going to be moving. Okay, breath of stop.
It will move very quickly.
Yes. And we even refined these slides further to what's in the packet. We had some estimates and some rounded numbers. But again, we thought at this high level, you don't want anyone at ten years back with this paper and say, you promised me a hundred units here. There's only seventy five. So because we've been talking about these levers and these things moving up and down, the presentation, we try to talk about the stories and the levels of it, but not necessarily that full detailed impact. So looking at, wanting to look at the neighborhood centers of Westgate. We'll go through this pretty quick, but just, sorry, Kate, I'm pointing at the screen.
Okay.
We have the existing three to five story zone, depending on exactly which specific parcel you're talking about. And so what we're talking about for the focused growth option is that would come up to five stories with the building height incentives. And we would have a small expansion to the south that would enable a four story mixed use to continue this down the, down the street a little bit, have some front, turn of the school, things like that. Then in the distributed growth, this is five stories with incentives, but there's no expansion beyond that. So I know it seems like it's like this much different, but Westgate is a situation that it's hard for us not to think of going up a bit. That's also been something that from all of our neighborhood conversations, everybody has, has talked about this as being a great place for a mixed use opportunity. Next, please. Five corners.
Sorry.
Five corners, another area that already is really well established within that first parcel deep on the map. And so this one, we are looking a little bit further down the street and looking up and down towards raising the center from three floors, which it currently is, up to four floors. But then also looking out so that we're not creating a little, you know, downtown high rise zone, but we are allowing the ability to get some multifamily and get a real urban walkable neighborhood there. Distributed growth, just say four stories with incentives, just on the parcels that are already zoned similar and call it a day at that. So, next slide. Here's the medical center that we were talking about. So you can see, here's where the sub area plan, this particular line is. And so we've been considering these corners as sort of that prime hundred percent corner area that would really help going up to five stories. And then for the medical, other medical uses, I mean, the hotel potentially, the or the residential that could be for the people who work in the medical centers, that kind of starts going around a little bit more on the outside. And that would be up to like four stories with multifamily or mixed use. You know, one of these things is that a lot of it would be multifamily ground floor because the market will dictate what can actually handle commercial of the ground. Because no one wants to build something that's going to be unvisited. And then with the distributed growth, we don't have the dot on the map because it's not as much of a focus as with the focus growth one. But we still are looking at it and still considering. So this is part of this back and forth math stuff that we're going. So that's a little messy, but next slide, please. And so as we start to look at the hubs, Firdale was always something that with the neighborhood meetings, everybody wants to see something become of the Firdale Village. And with the topography, the way it is, it actually gives an opportunity to look at potentially allowing four to six feet, but because of that topography, the way it would be set up, it's not going to actually look like it's a big huge tower. So it's an opportunity, we believe, that could really have some potential. In my mind, as a designer, I'm already like, designing, working, designing the little thing. So it's just great courtyard on this deck. It's really wonderful. And then the other thing is Firdale North, which sort of already exists in some capacity. For focused growth, we aren't looking at it as much because we are trying to eat these centers as the the real stronger elements. But in the distributed growth, we think that that could spread out a bit and become a bit of a neighborhood hub that could have some community amenities. And so then that can go up to, as we're saying, three story multifamily. And next. So North Bowl, very similar as far as the hubs go, just that focused area is not as much because they're still putting the emphasis on Westgate and the other centers. And distributed growth is a little bit more lower, a little spread out so that it becomes, I'm sorry, no. Distributed growth, it gets a little higher and spread out as the centers come down and the hubs come up. Okay, next. And Perrinville is, again, you know, really looking at the empty lot and post office. And currently it's allowing three floors for the focused growth. We're thinking of having it allow three fours. But potentially change the use just to allow some more mixed use at the, above. And then for the distributed, give that a little more oomph and give them another floor with the incentives. I think that's it.
Yeah, and I think the other issue, and Dan would know, one of the issues here, if you look at that existing zoning, it's three floors, but it still has height limitations that don't really make it feasible to build. So, yeah, so Alt A really tries to, tries to do what I kind of talked about a little bit with downtown. It's kind of like reorganize and categorically shift the land use policy so that it really does enable that kind of redevelopment. Is that?
That is our last slide. So I'm just picking up on whatever questions and comments we want to take from, from here and that we can talk about.
First, last time, just someone else know that first. I'm happy to go first, but. No, I think I'm. We don't have the same notes as there, so I think I'm struggling with that a little bit. My comment was gonna be, it seems like. It seems like the alternate A and alternate B have, at least the way this is shown, the same building heights. Um, and on a lot of them. Um, and I think maybe that some of that has changed since this was put out. Um, but I think that's what I was struggling to see is the difference there.
Now, it's because we looked at it and said, you know what's going to happen is people are going to struggle to see the difference.
Gotcha. So that was really my only comment.
So I have two. One is, um, looking at the Westgate, first of all. And thinking about the extent versus the height.
Yes.
Um, and also thinking about Jerry, your comment about one of the problems with the height is when it extends for miles on end. Um, it seems as though taking advantage of what that corridor has to offer, but perhaps. Um, not all at the same height, but you. Do sort of taper off.
Yep.
And, and, you know, so maybe it's not four, five stories all the way out, maybe it's. Four or three and down kind of thing. Um, so that's one comment I had. And the other comment I had about is Firdale, which I think is really ripe. However, I hope that there'll be some analysis around displacement. There's a lot of businesses, including a daycare, that are there in part because it's cheap. And I know that for sure on the daycare. And so there's displacement risk and, um, and so. While I really like the idea of Firdale coming to life more. I, I do worry about the displacement and, um, I think that needs to be part of your evaluation.
Um, you know, this is, uh. Looking at something over twenty years, so we definitely, again, wouldn't be trying to do it too soon. But I know that this aquarium shop is actually around the nation known because of, of the things that it sells. And I am a, uh, pet parent of six cats. I also want to see the cat, uh.
Haircut was gone?
I'm pretty sure this is going to be devastated.
You're talking about Cat Cafe?
Yeah.
Uh, the groom's gone?
I don't know what the groomers, but there was a cat cafe that's gone. But the daycare is there. I'll tell you that.
So I, I can, I can say that for my, uh, displacement is something that we're going to evaluate in EIS and also through our, our policies. That is, we would do that, but that is a requirement, uh, uh, of us in this go around, so.
I'm saying a particular.
Yeah, yeah, so noted.
So I, I would love to see sort of a. I don't know about a third alternative, but maybe merging a little bit of the extent. And trying to figure out a way to meet these units, uh, needs. With a lower height overall. And even if that means like, for example. Merging your, um, expanded medical district, because you already have a lot of development that, that's there and, and some good job opportunities. Mixing that with, um, it five corners. Maybe having more and maybe it is a step down in a similar fashion as Westgate. So thinking about it of. Allowing for more of the type housing that's needed to use the ink. In more parts of the city and maybe a little bit more extensive.
Yeah, absolutely. And we know that's where, that is where it'll land at the end is, you know.
And I really encourage you to look at the Wade Theater area.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's one, that's north of, uh, nine.
North of downtown.
No, not, not, no, it's, it's, it's east of nine.
Wade Theater is on Main Street and Ninth.
Main and Ninth, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, one other thing in that is, you know, if you look at where there are schools or parks. And doing a cross-examination of where the age of the housing is at to turn around. And are the areas where that might be, uh, another mini hub? I don't know if there is such a thing, but, um, trying to find those areas, like if we had Esperance part of the city, that'd be great. Cause I think there's some really good areas in there, but it's not.
I think, um, just in terms of. Presentation, when we're talking about comparing these two alternatives and getting down into, um. I know we don't want to get into like specific unit counts on specific areas, but I think it would be nice to see almost like a pie chart. Graph that says this neighborhood and this hub is gonna take this much of our twenty seven hundred. Under each of these approaches. I think that'd be really nice to see when comparing the two alternatives.
It's a great idea.
Yeah, we were, we, we went back and forth on how to illustrate this, because right, it's, it's complex, but that's.
I have a quick question on, okay, it might be along those lines, um. Because I, I was following along, um, on the packet online that, um, is on the, the Edmund's website. And it does show, um, on this packet at least, um, different capacities, right? North Bowl thirty unit capacity, you know, mixed use adds sixty unit capacity for, you know, Alt B. Um, so I mean, th- that, that would be nice to see, um, just as a, a rough projection and so that we can figure out, okay, well. You know, is, is there an opportunity to, um, you know. Cut somewhere or, you know, if, i- if, if, if there's an area that, that is taking more of a brunt where we can. Um, like Judy's talking about, say, okay, well, we're going to go ahead and, you know, make that height. Level down a bit, but, you know, expand it, um, outwards, you know, what does that look like? Um, but yeah, I just, I just was kind of curious on i- if, if that's what, um, is missing in the one that you, that we have. Um, on the presentation here versus the one, um, on, uh, on the, the city website.
And I think that can address some of the existing capacity questions as well, right? Where are the exist, where is the existing capacity? Is there an overlap between existing capacity? And some of these expanded areas that we're. Overloading or, you know, putting more emphasis in some areas under, you know, just. As far as communicating the information, right? Whether it's, whether it's a good approach or not, just understanding that that way.
Yeah.
So the question had by mine, in order to meet, so I'm going to go back to the slide that had the type housing and the numbers needed. Uh, I think it's sixty-three.
That one?
Nope.
The table?
The one with the.
The one before it, I think, but I think either way, I think it shows the same thing.
It's the same thing, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's same. So the question I have is where you do show the number of units, you don't show. What type? So are we meeting the type needed housing, not just the numbers?
That's it. It's really small font, uh, but see where she's circling at the bottom of the bar chart. Low-rise apartments and condos. And then you go to the right, it's ADUs, and then you go to the right again, and it's the missing middle price types.
Right.
So those are, we, uh, are the assumed affordability hierarchy that's, uh, that maybe Kate could show here. See how it, those correspond to the.
Yes, so I got that part. But in terms of where that housing, I mean, is that going to be distributed in each one of these areas? So I'm kind of building on your idea.
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm saying. Like out of that four thousand eight hundred and sixty-two. Where are those in these neighborhood hubs and centers? Or is that all highway to me?
Yeah, because it's, it's not just the number of units, but it's the type of units that we're trying to, to reach.
Yeah.
Okay.
Which is a great segue for what's coming next time.
Okay.
Uh, I let her back, back on the schedule, but that, but that is, I mean, that's, that, that's next. That's when you go away from the dots. That's where we need to start, um, being able to, uh, really pinpoint my data.
Yeah.
Is there an appetite to? Do a more robust engagement on just the alternatives that we're currently presenting outside of the online. Forum that we're planning to have in March or?
So we, um. We're doing a few things. We're doing, uh, neighborhood stakeholder meetings, where we'll really be honing in on. Economic development, uh, environment, uh, you know, business community or economic development, there is see that, there is said that. Um. Housing. Housing, one of them, that's all that's in economic development. Uh, and then the waterfront and then, uh, and then, then, but really we have found success, uh, well. In, uh, in other cities, they found great success, but in, in even our. Small approaches to doing these virtual online open houses, we feel like they yields the most amount of response if you have it open. For quite a while, with high-level legible graphics that people can interact with. And so we've, we've have a, um, community engagement consultant that has shown us a lot of work that they've done, um, in other cities in the region where. People can really interact with the webpage and post notes and comments and, right? And so it be, becomes a really, uh, well. Healthy dialogue, so, um, that is the plan at the moment. And I do believe, Kate, and not to put you on the spot, because I don't have the schedule in front of me, but, uh.
Yes, we are going back out to the neighborhood. Hmm.
Yeah, can you tell me, do you remember?
Yeah. So the open house should launch, if we can all keep to the schedule and not make too many changes to what we're looking at right now. Should launch March seventh. Um, it should be open for about three weeks. In the middle of that time period, we will go to council for some initial feedback, um, on the content that's posted as part of the online open house. Um, following that, we will do in April. Um. A kind of round of this same level of material. So not getting into too many of details, but trying to create those distinguishing features. Um, between the different alternatives and, and hear from folks about the extents and the intensity. Um, through some, a round of neighborhood meetings. Um, once that's completed, um, our, our schedule really requires us to set the. These alternatives, the metrics is what I mean there. The units, the metrics, what we're really studying in April. So there's another, you know. There'll be, um, a lot of conversations and input and. You know, the comments that we're hearing tonight about kind of push-pull. All of that has to settle really by April and we'll be primarily taking comments on this. Um, content with some tweaks up until then. And I think what we heard tonight was some really good feedback and comments on how to make. Um, this material more legible. Um, to contain, uh, information that people want to be seeing. And so we will be working on that. Um, really over the next ten business days. Does that help, Susan?
That helps a lot. Thank you.
Richard, great.
Yeah, one, one more question that I had, and, and this might be kind of in the paint of getting, um. You know, too in the weeds, too many details too soon. Um, I like to do that, but, um, so just tell me if, it, well, if what I'm saying is actually doing that, which I think it is. But, um, I guess my question is, how are we looking to throughout this process? Communicate one of the things that I'm hearing from a lot of people, which is. You know, these different areas and hubs, I really like this idea, like I said, from, from before. But, but that's going to increase density, right? We're going to be increasing, you know, we're, we're, we're building out for that. But more importantly, I think, how is this going to affect the current. Surrounding infrastructure of these hubs, right? Um, and I know that's a big part of planning, right? And, and that's a big question that a lot of people have had, um, throughout the years and specifically, I, I think as we're going through this. So, you know, what's, yeah, I guess, how are we looking to calculate that? How are we looking to communicate that? I think that's going to be really important throughout this whole process for everybody in and around Edmonds.
So I think, Rich, one of the things that. We're doing in setting this up is like we're, we're like, we're putting all of our chess pieces on the board right now. And then the reason why we have to stop moving the chess pieces around in April is so that our, and we have a, and you'll meet them. Um, I don't think you've met our sub consultant, but we have a sub consultant called Herrera. That is tasked with doing the EIS analysis piece. So during that process, which takes a fair amount of time, right? Like you have to go through all the things that you're just talking about. Um, you start to get into the weeds on utilities and, you know, there's another consultant that Susan has engaged on the transportation impacts, right? So what we're doing is very front end right now. Um, we're coming up with our ideal. I, our ideal approaches for the kind of place we want Edmonds to be. Can we describe that in such a way conceptually? That then we have these other subject matter experts who can come through and start to poke holes in our ideas. And they start to tell us, and that's what the mitigations are, is what do we need to plan for? What does Edmonds need to do in order to achieve their ideal goal? So that's what the whole. Big year is really going to be about. Um, and so in order to meet our schedule and to have those people start to do that work. We put our chess pieces on, they do the work, then we can move the chess pieces around again. And then we have a final EIS that kind of confirms it all. And that, and I think that's a really helpful way, then the city kind of knows, okay, where do I align, need to align my investments? Because we've decided to make Firdale this really amazing new fifteen-minute neighborhood that's full of veterinary shops, you know?
My dad goes to the fish shop.
Uh, just to, just one more point on that is, um, is really looking at, uh, going, you know, thinking about how we started this presentation full circle is why. Why we plan and really how do we want to invest? Uh, and so this, this whole process will inform our new CIP CFP, right? And so really focusing growth, understanding the impacts, understanding the needs and planning for it, investing in it. Uh, so that, that's really is the whole point of this. And I think, um. Furthermore, it's really, and I know I keep driving this point home, uh, but impact fees and looking at incentives and really maximizing not only the city investment. But thinking about how the private sector comes to the table in these, in these centers and hubs and offers, um, offers that investment as well.
And schedule wise, once the two, um. The two alternatives, or I guess the three alternatives are kind of set down, you've got. We're in the planning department, you've got people way smarter than us in utilities and in the other departments that can't wait to get this to then use for their analysis. So Rich, to your, uh, in the weeds question, that will be, um, the result of this, we'll begin their analysis on it to find out. That as Kate said, find where the holes are, find what infrastructure isn't ready for this. And then we adapt.
So I'm going to ask two questions, but I know it's really late, so I don't necessarily expect the, or maybe today goes maybe the next presentation might be able to address it. Uh, one is, it sounds as though. The existing comm plant policies aren't necessarily going to be changed. They might be, but they may not be, but you're building on those.
Right.
And then second is. When you do the EIS and when you talk about doing things à la carte, part of the EIS needs to address the cumulative impacts, which could vary based on. What your alternative is. So I don't know the extent to which. You can say it's à la carte if you, let's say. Do your two, these two alternatives and then you say, right, you know, or instead we're going to do this kind of mishmash over here. And oh, by the way, you're going to get challenged because they may have cumulative effects that are very different.
Well, and there's, there's, let me just be clear that I generalized that. I mean, honestly, there clearly by the, the description of à la carte. Oh, there is a, a strict methodology on what you must study in any EIS and what can and can, you know, can't be included and at what time, right? So, uh, so and again, Herrera is not here this evening, but be, you know, the DEIS, uh, will, will definitely look at the bookends in which we provide. Um, and I believe, and Kate, you can correct me if I'm wrong, between the DEIS and the FEIS. If there's things that need to be changed, ultimately they'll be rationalized and reflected in the FEIS, which is the final.
And we do need to have this certain level of balance because of the growth management act and everything at the end. So it's not exactly à la carte, because if you fix something here, that's going to affect something that's going to have to. So that's why I think actually your, your analogy on levers was, was good, because everything is. Going to affect the other one. And, um, we're gonna. Put the chess pieces down and then we're going to find what's most important. We're going to find, you know, especially through all the other studies, all the other policies where. We're going to find, you know, especially through all the other studies, all the other policies, where things. Are most advantageous to to um, you know, with the climate, with the um equities especially. And then that's going to push another one in another direction. And they're going to come back and tell us, oh, well, we don't have the infrastructure for that. And then we're going to. So that's uh, that's uh, that's what we have for.
Very good. Well, uh, just want to compliment the staff and uh by after the outstanding hack, if you guys put together, I know. At least me, and I know some of the board members were had super high expectations coming to this specific meeting. In my opinion, I I feel like because we're met, the pack was well put together, made sense. Uh, so yeah, uh, thank you for all your hard work.
Everyone, thank you. Looking forward to the next one. Okay?
You're so patiently over there.
Moving to extended agenda, uh, Mike and I did discuss one additional topic before moving into. We're executing, um, want to get a poll on if everyone is okay with having a special meeting, so an hour earlier.
Um, yeah, well, at at least six thirty for sure. I think we could probably do it in a half hour. Um, but um, the city attorney has identified a possible legal issue that he would like to address.